2017 to 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. You all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Catherine Brokaw, please.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Right. First on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have six resolutions. The first is a resolution approving renewal of the taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Robin Canova doing business as A to Z Taxi LLC. The second is a resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Executive Transportation LLC doing business as Executive Transportation LLC. The third is a resolution approving purchase of a new city bus for the Burlington Urban Service. The fourth is a resolution establishing an angle parking zone on the north and south side of the 400 block of High Street. The fifth is a resolution approving fees for rental housing inspections. And the sixth is a resolution of support for the workforce housing tax incentive program project by Triple S Leasing LLC. And we also have one public hearing set for April 17th. That's a consideration of transit grant application. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent agenda removed? Mr. Sheehan?
Leon Sheehan, 1821 Mount Boson Street. Anytime I see tax incentive, I want to talk about it. Number six.
Okey doke. Can I get a motion? Oh, council? You guys good? Help? Okay.
Your Honor, I move to approve all items except number six listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. First, we have a consideration of a purchase agreement for the property located at the southwest corner of South Fifth Street, Maple Street, City Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland?
This is a lot being considered through the neighborhood stabilization program, the NSP program that we've sold previously, a number of new and rehabbed homes throughout the community. The city received neighborhood stabilization funds a number of years ago to improve neighborhoods, try and get homeownership for income-qualified individuals in the target areas, primarily where South Hill, North Hill, Saunderson Heights areas. And we've been very successful in doing that and rehabbing some homes and building some new homes and trying to have a positive impact on the neighborhoods that they were built and rehabbed in. We currently have a home that we're looking to construct on the corner of Maple and South Fifth Street. This is the last project that could be used for these funds. Our grant expires in December of this year and any funds remaining at that time would have to be paid back to the program. We put out information to try and get interested or qualified individuals for this property a number of months ago and went through that process. I had an open house at the Maple Leaf Center, tried to do some online communications to get people pre-qualified to purchase this home, which was a requirement before we could start construction on the home. The individual has to be at or below 50% area median income, as well as qualify for a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage through a lending institution. The combination of those two is quite difficult, did take us some time, but do have an offer from an individual that did qualify through the neighborhood stabilization program and qualify income-wise and for a mortgage at a local lending institution. The sale price would be the actual appraised value or lower the appraised value or construction cost, but then through the grant program, we buy down that actual purchase price to what they qualify for a bank loan for. So in the past, when we built new homes, we sell it for the actual appraised value, which is generally, for a new home that costs 130 to 150 to construct, it can appraise it or assess at 90 to 100,000. So that's what our sale price, the maximum we can sell for through the program, but then we can buy down that amount to make sure the person purchasing the home isn't put in a position where too much of their income is going towards a mortgage. So we have Amanda Waters qualified through the program, through the NSP application process, and meets all the requirements to purchase the home. So this purchase agreement proposes selling the property to her for the appraised or construction cost, the actual lesser of the two, with a buy down to 28,500 for the actual cost to the purchaser. These are the requirements of the program. We have to go by the requirements of the program. We did try and get as many people notified and aware of this process early on. Went through that for a number of months, and Amanda's been the only one that's qualified and submitted an application. So we'd like to move forward with this purchase agreement with her to get started on the home and get it constructed this spring and summer.
Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that has any concerns, comments?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th Street. My question is, why is it a $150,000 house? My understanding that it's her and a 10-year-old daughter. I don't live in a $150,000 house. Can we build one for 80,000? Does that be a two-story, three-bedroom, two-bath house for her and her daughter? Just seems to me like a lot of money's being wasted on a house. How long does she have to live there?
Do you want me to answer that? The home specs were built irrelevant of who was going forward with that. Those are home specs. We don't suit the home to the actual purchaser after we know who purchaser is. We went into this program knowing that three-bedroom houses were a need in this community. Two-story tries to fit the feel of the neighborhood. That's a requirement of the program. It has to go through environmental clearance, make sure it meets the kind of character of the neighborhood, putting a slab ranch home in that neighborhood didn't seem appropriate through working with regional planning and what they've had discussions on. Three-bedroom, two-bath, that was the concept going into the program before we had any potential purchaser on the property because we know that's a need. There is a requirement to live in the home for a period of time. Generally, it's five years, or you have to pay a percentage of that sale price back to the program. That's common for all our CDBG programs, similar to NSP. If you move out after a year, you don't get a capture, that increase in sale price versus what you bought it for. It has to be paid back through the program, and that's part of the project.
But can she refinance it for the full price? As happened up there on the corner of Central and Valley, happened after humanity built a house, and the Countrywide or Citywide, whatever, one of those finance companies was, the people about four years into it refinanced it for like $90,000 and then let the bank have it back. They got all that money, and it happened after humanity didn't get the money back, and then they got foreclosed on because they didn't make their payments. So I think we just need to have some protection in there that we don't have people that are going to work the system. And also, there's brought up in the paper the other day about a retaining wall that needs to be replaced. It's fallen down. Is that part of this $150,000 house? Or is that something else the city's going to take care of because we're nice people?
The low bid on the home is 130,000. We had three bids on the home. It ranged from 130 to, I think, 180,000. We did take the low bid at 130,000. The retaining wall will be repaired as part of this project. It isn't falling in. Some of the rock is dislodged, and that'll be replaced and set back in place.
It's fallen out. There's a five-to-10-foot section that has fallen out. I just drove by it on the way down here.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sheehan?
Leon Sheehan, 1821 Mount Boson Street. Just questions. What are the income guidelines in terms of dollars on this project?
I don't know if I have them in front of me. It's 50% area median income. I believe for one family, it's 23,000 or 24,000. For a two-person, it's 24,000, $25,000. And I may be off a few thousand, but it's fairly low.
Thank you. Any other concerns or comments from the audience?
Bob Sar, 317 South Fifth, and I'm also 500 Maple Street, which is just at the top of the picture there.
There's the retaining wall in case you don't know what we're talking about. Containing wall that collapsed is a section about the front here. The retaining wall has got to be repaired.
So the first thing I'd like to know, or verify, is that you do intend to repair the retaining wall before turning over the property to Ms. Waters. Is that correct?
That's part of the...
Okay, great. So I can make this really short. I highly support what the city's doing here. This is exactly what we need to bring Burlington up, is to work on our poorer neighborhoods. I've been in that house for 20, well, on that block for 20 years. Putting somebody in that property instead of having another vacant lot that just sits there year after year after year is going to help Burlington come up, and it's money well spent, and I approve of what you're doing immensely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments or concerns? Okay. Thank you to those who came up. Counsel?
Is the lady disqualified? Is she here to speak, or is that appropriate?
She's here.
Does the young lady want to speak?
Probably.
Then the young lady doesn't have to speak.
All right. Nice to see you, though.
May I add something?
Come to the microphone.
I'm sorry. I told you I'm afraid of microphones.
I spoke to Ms. Waters yesterday to welcome her to the neighborhood a little prematurely. I hope not. And we both agreed that there's this false impression that we live in a dangerous neighborhood over there on Maple Street, and that's not true. And she's lived in Denver, and I've lived in Denver, and Denver's a hell of a lot more frightening than Maple Street in Burlington, Iowa.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
Good program.
The only thing that I want to add is, what about the refi deal that Marlon brought up?
This has a, we'll have a five-year lien against it. Any action that goes to do something during that five-year timeframe, that there's a lien, would require us to subrogate, to sign off a document that approved of any changes that were being done. It doesn't mean that you can't have a problem with a house, but there is, we do have pieces that are mechanisms in place that are designed to make sure that it meets that term. That's not a lifetime. This program, NSP, is a federal program that's designed to take work in a neighborhood where you have seen some problems with home values and try to stabilize those home values. And it does it by putting a cash infusion here into a brand-new home to try to put a home value in there that is higher than what the average home values of the area neighborhood is, and try to help to bring it up or to sustain it. Right or wrong, that's what the intent of the funds are for and what this program is designed to do, and to try to get someone who may otherwise not be able to do something other than be in a rental situation to have a homeownership opportunity. Doesn't guarantee success, but it's trying to accomplish some goals.
Could you reiterate again where these dollars are coming from, Jim?
NSP is, that's federal money.
Hand it down to the state.
Is it through HUD or?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that's yours and my individual taxpayer money, regardless of how it is, but yes, these are federal funds, and we either have them to use or not.
Marlon?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th. Just one more question. Taxes. What is this going to be assessed at? And are you going to make it so she can't pay her taxes? I mean, you're going to bring the house payments down, but the taxes, if you're going to have it assessed at $100,000, it's not that much over there.
Still, I gotta have you guys, we can only have one person talking at a time, and at the microphone, please, but on the...
He just said $100,000, what it's going to be assessed at.
No.
That's correct.
No.
Well, actually, I thought it was 100...
Construction cost is 130. We don't know the assessment until it's complete. On average, new homes have been 90 to 100,000 or 100,000 or so, but depends on the neighborhood.
So $100,000, that's going to be $3,500 in taxes?
No.
That's high.
$2,000.
Mine's at 100,000, and it's 2300, 2300 taxes. That's a lot to put on her. I mean, that's $200 extra a month. Has that been figured into it? Is my question. I'm just, again, okay, now I'm flipping around. I want to help her out. I wonder what the taxes are going to be. Are we doing a TIF on this, or?
No. Part of that bank qualification is looking at income, looking at what your ability to pay is, and they're using a standard formula for that. So they're figuring in those expenditures when they do it. Now, we don't do the underwriting, the bank does, but they do come into play with looking at what your income is and what you should be putting towards your home expenditures and making sure that it stays within...
Just so it wasn't appraised at 25 because that's what she's paying, what she is paying. Except the 100,000 of what the house is...
They're figuring in what her home, what the home costs are, just like anyone else getting a home mortgage will have done.
Scott Deal, 613 North Garfield. I just want to comment on this because my wife and I are recipients of the NSP program. Three years ago, we purchased the house. I agree with Mr. Sar. It does improve the neighborhood. Unfortunately, the houses right around me are pieces of garbage, falling apart around me are nuisances. Their yards are littered with trash and boats, and everything just piled up. But here, I have my pristine new home that's being assessed at, like you said, 100,000 or so, and that's why I'm so much against your 40 cent increase in property taxes, because I am one of those lower-income people, and as I mentioned two weeks ago, we're hurting the elderly as well. But this is a good program, but you guys need to follow up with your nuisance department and with other, whatever other departments you have, to make sure that the neighbors around us are not depreciating our value at the same time. Because I had, unfortunately, I had to go over the head of some of the city employees because they were not following through on my phone calls and aggravation about nuisances and how the neighborhood was just run down totally. And I had to get a councilman involved, and finally, the next day, something was done. But it's like it's constantly fighting with these other neighbors. That may not be the case on Maple, but it is on North Garfield off of agency, and it continues to be, and it really aggravates me because we're struggling, like I said two weeks ago, we're struggling to pay our taxes, we're struggling to improve and keep and maintain a beautiful home that was built through this program. But you guys need to follow up through your departments and make sure the rest of the neighborhood starts kicking in and doing their fair share. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? Are we good?
Yes.
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the purchase agreement of the property located at the southwest corner of South Fifth and Maple Street, City Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Thank you for your comments, folks. Appreciate it.
And congratulations to Mrs. Waters. Congratulations. Make sure if she leaves here, throw her one of these bracelets. You got one? You're all right.
She's got one, all right.
And she's all about Burlington already. That's what I'm talking about. Okay. Next, we have a consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Gannon Street and Whittaker Street right-ofways adjacent to the property located at 1104 Gannon Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
This was a request by the adjacent property owner to vacate portions of Gannon Street and Whittaker Street, west of Osborne, south of Iowa Street, adjacent to properties under the ownership of Mark Brockway. This is vacating the portion from the lot at 1417 Iowa, from the back lot line of that lot south, and then from Osborne Street to the railroad tracks. This did go to the planning commission on February 22nd, and was voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the vacating of the alley based on petition of the applicant, the applicant owning all property adjacent to the right-ofway, maintenance of utility easement and access for emergency personnel. An easement would be retained over the existing sewer within the vacated right-ofway for public utility access and maintenance. The property could be closed, provided any closure provides a Knox box or Knox padlock to allow emergency personnel into the site, and then it is to be combined by the adjacent parcels owned by Mr. Brockway. If you have any other questions, I'll try and answer those as well.
Let's see, do we have any questions from the audience? I see none. Thank you. Counsel?
1133 Gannon, owned by Brockway's also.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we good?
Yeah. Motion to close?
Target.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Gannon Street and Whittaker Street right-ofways adjacent to the property located at 1104 Gannon Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second. Thank you, gentlemen. Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye, seven. Okay. Next, we have a consideration...
Chris Brockway.
Next, we have a consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling the alley running from Columbia Street to Washington Street between Front Street and Main Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
This again was a request of the adjacent property owner to vacate the alley between Columbia and Washington and Main and Front Street. This did go to the planning commission as well on February 22nd, and they voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the vacating of the described right-ofway based on petition of the applicant and providing utility easement for Alliant Energy. They did have a desire to expand kitchen off of the Drake Restaurant into the alley right-ofway, all adjacent property owners owned by Genesee Industries and/or the Drake or other subsidiaries. This alley would be combined with the property to the east of the alley, which is all under one ownership, so.
I can't help it. Y'all come. It's been...
I can get you in a commercial.
Anybody from the audience, concerns or comments? I see none. Counsel?
Not here.
Motion to close?
Target.
Y'all come. Let's move to second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance vacating and selling the alley running from Columbia Street to Washington Street between Front Street and Main Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Target.
In second. Kathleen, let's move on.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Greenway of Burlington Associates for encroachment into Valley Street right-ofway at 2312 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
I did want to note on the previous two for the applicants, those do take three readings unless weighed by counsel, so those will be finalized at a future meeting. Again, as a request that previously came for the council to place a gate at the southern portion of the apartments located at 2312 Valley Street, just north of Flint Hills Drive. They desire to place this gate to try and improve safety in the area, reducing access to Washington Street, primarily for the access into the apartments. Upon review and further discussion, a few conditions would be placed on the encroachment. The gate shall remain open from December 1st to March 1st, and shall be opened immediately by the property management should snow accumulation warrant, snow removal by the City of Burlington outside of these dates. Access to the gate shall be provided to emergency personnel as required and shall include a Knox padlock. No parking signs shall be added to the area of the street that will be closed, and the corresponding curb shall be painted red. In the allowed encroachment, shall be a gate across Valley Street, approximately 150 feet north of Flint Hills Drive with appropriate signage. Did look into the name of the street and talked to Chris Clements. It did not have any record of it. GIS did have this labeled as Valley Street, so the signage is going to be changed appropriately for that. Does lie directly between Argyle and Melrose, and there is an Argyle and Hayes north into the development, but the street has, per GIS records and records we found, been a continuation of Valley, so that street sign will be changed to make that a little more clear.
Make sense.
With communication with Jim Adams, the management company, they did, at their board meeting, discuss these and the conditions, and all felt comfortable and in favor of the condition placed on this, so.
Anybody from the audience have any questions or concerns? Mr. Sheehan?
Leon Sheehan, 1821 Mount Boson Street. Nothing about money, surprise, surprise. On this and the previous one, is there any risk that, I guess what I'm concerned about is fire department personnel having adequate access.
We brought that up last week, but Chief, do you want to just come up real briefly and address that?
Normally, we want to have two access points to everything, and normally, when we come into this area, we use the entrance on Shield Street. So we're still going to have the two entrances. The second one, we'll just have to get out and unlock the padlock and get in there, so there's really not a...
Not a problem.
No, not really a problem. Or we have the master key with us at all times to get through any change if we need so to get in, so we discuss this at length, the two entrances, so.
Does the police department also have access then, too?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
And on both of them, the Knox padlock or Knox access is what's required by the police department, so they'd have keys to the actual gate for the fire department.
Counsel?
I have a motion to close.
Target.
So moved. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving a permanent encroachment agreement with Greenway of Burlington Associates for encroachment into Valley Street right-ofway at 2312 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye, seven. Resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving a loan agreement authorizing the issuance of $9,555,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond Series 2017B and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Second. Thank you, sir.
This is the final step in the borrowing of funds, 2.2 million for the police department rehab, a little over $5 million for the flood wall and the remainder, two, just shy of $3 million for three different TIF projects, roundabout are matched to a RISE grant for that. Agency Street West of Roosevelt are matched to a RISE grant for the GE project there and then Agency Street, did I say east or west? Should have been west of Roosevelt. And then the final one, Agency Street East of Roosevelt, just doing a widening, which is the majority of the funds on that's TIF related. This authorizes the repayment of that, those bonds through 2036. Repayments will be for the police department out of debt service levy. The flood wall will be out of the sales tax increment. State growth in sales tax will be used to make those payments. And then again, the three TIF projects will be used in TIF funds for the repayment stream.
Any questions from the audience? Yes, sir?
Bob Zar, 500 Maple Street. The flood wall is, what are the provisions to prevent the river from backing up through the sewer system, which always comes in behind whatever we build down there by the auditorium?
Anyone here is a good enough engineer to-
It's something to think about, because you can't close a sewer system.
There are, are there closures on those now, but I'm not, yeah.
It runs downhill.
Literally.
I'm at the wastewater treatment plant and I've sat in on some of the meetings, but not all the meetings pertaining to the flood wall and how they're going to integrate that with the issues as raised about the sewer system. The intent, I believe, is to allow the river to back up the box sewers that are there that serve as conduits for surface water runoff from the catch basins that are along the curb lines in the downtown area. And I believe the intent is to isolate those catch basins in the downtown area or be able to isolate those from the box sewer when the flood wall is installed. So then, if that's the case, then where does that water that those catch basins normally handle go? There will be some new stormwater lift stations that will be built in the downtown area to handle the surface water runoff when the flood protection is up and those basins no longer can flow by gravity through those large box sewers to the river. So the river will continue to back up into the box sewers as it has historically ever since they've been there and somehow they determine the elevation, how far back into those sewers at this particular river stage will that water rise to and then deal with all the catch basins in that area and forward to the river to isolate them from the box sewers and to send that water, the surface water, then to those new stormwater lift stations. And I'm suspecting that wastewater plant will be responsible for maintaining those stormwater stations as we do the wastewater stations.
You make me maintain everything?
Yeah.
But in those lift stations that will pump over during a, if during a high water event, those are not part of the first phase of this project. They are designed to be in the second phase. Really, that's, I think, all that's in the second phase is essentially the pumping stations to pump water over.
Now, in the last few floods, water that has collected or leaked through the Hescos or collected on the riverside of the Hescos, like around the auditorium, you may have seen we have some trailer mounted pumps that we will set up and pump any water that collects on the city side of the barriers until such time those lift stations are built. Thank you. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don. Any other questions?
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street, I'll be brief. I still think, given the state of the state's economy as far as projected sales tax revenues with farm prices declining, what the Republicans have done to the labor force as far as cutting wages, going into debt, assuming that there's going to be a sales tax increment, I think is a really bad bet.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
I have a question about the project that affects GE. I was wondering if, is that changed at all if GE sells?
As of now, they're, they're planning to move forward. They have a product, they had a division that they have up for sale. That's one of their highest performing divisions. They assume that any sale will be a process of several years and this is one, within that division, this is one of their best performing sites. That being said, long-term for what that division does, they're, they're not sure, but they're, they're still planning on the expansion that was the basis of the RISE project moving forward. About all I can say, just speaking with the chamber in regards to whether we're, we still have a project that should be moving forward, they're stating as of now, yes.
Good question, little Andy. Are we good?
Yep.
Okay. Let's take it to vote.
Okay. Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a resolution establishing angled parking zone in the 500 block of Market Street.
Second.
A resolution is before you to create perpendicular or angled parking, as it is called, in the area of Market Street, the 500 block. It's a fairly underutilized section of road when the Sixth Street overpass was installed. This became essentially unusable as a street. We would create 13 to 14 parking spots. The parking width on the spots are standard, usually eight foot. We're going to be doing 9.3 because of the short turnaround area, so there's a little bit more swing room in there. The, the distance or the width of the road is at, is 38 foot. The minimus, the minimal one-way is 35 foot and I know that there would be two-way traffic created by the time you pull in there and then back out and leave, but the traffic will be fairly minimal. So, based on that, Public Works recommends going forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
My concern, I addressed it, Mr. McGregor, before the meeting, is why does counsel have to have a say in this? I mean, why can't Public Works just go do it? I don't, is there something in our procedure or why do they have to come to us and get approval to stripe a street?
That's a good question.
I can understand it if we're changing, like we did out here in Washington, changed it from parallel to angle. I can understand that, but I mean, it seems unnecessary.
From what the operations manager has told me is that they've always had the addition or removal of parking go through counsel, just because of the alarm, long-term cost ramifications of restriping every year. I don't know when that was started, but.
I'm still not-
It seems unnecessary to me. Anyway, thanks.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Is there any other planned improvements for that street?
Staff did some patching on it last week, I think regardless of whether or not the parking stripes were going to be there. I believe that the church was probably going to use it regardless, so. We did do some patch work on some of the area as you enter the driveway. We did not do anything over top of the brick. It's fairly smooth there, but the street has seen its age. It's definitely not a new street, so, but.
Are we good? Okay. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move approval of a resolution of support for the workforce housing tax incentive program project from Triple S Leasing LLC.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Eric, did you want to review what it was?
Yeah. Application by Triple S Leasing, which owns the apartments at the corner of West Burlington Avenue and West Avenue, to the workforce housing tax incentive program. This is formerly the Enterprise Zone Program. As part of the workforce housing tax credit program, one of the requirements of the application is to get a letter of support from the city as well as verify that there's a local matching amount of $1,000 per unit created, which can be over a number of year period. So the, the resolution, I guess based on the housing needs assessment plan, is supporting the project with a typical tax abatement would meet the local match required over the time period that they're constructing. They're looking to build a 16-unit apartment complex at the site, which is 4051 West Avenue.
Then that's your question, Mr. Shayhan?
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street, all I can say is here we go again. We have all these tax incentives for economic development. I guess the simple solution, why don't we just raise wages in this town instead of all these gimmicks to try and compensate for ever declining wages? This is ridiculous.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Counsel?
Nothing here.
Let's vote on it. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. This is time we entertain comments from the audience. If there's something that we have not discussed, is there anybody from the audience?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th Street. It was brought up in the paper a while back and when you sold the land or traded the land for down there on Main and Valley Streets, you had a parking lot and you traded that for, we're one hour martinizing, pardon my memory, but that building was supposed to be taken out of the parking lot, put in there. When is that going to happen? Because, I can't think of the name of the company, Millards, thank you, got the land and they're building on it, but we don't have the parking lot. They were supposed to tear it down and put it in the parking lot for us. When's that going to get done?
Was that set at the year's time that they had, Eric?
I'd have to double check. It may be May or-
It should have been done at the same time.
We gave them part of that, we, part of the agreement that was done, that was approved by counsel, allowed the transfer to get over so that they could use, get the building built as they were doing the construction on their site and not put us in a position where we had to force tenants that they had in those other buildings out quicker than they were ready to. So there was provision in there to get them through into lease this spring. I don't know whether it was May or-
Double check.
Or what, but before they had to get the land to us.
Wasn't that parking lot for the people that worked at the bank? So where are those people parking now?
So we provided with that agreement on-street parking for bank customers adjacent to that lot, recognizing that that's, again, a short term through the time that the US Bank moves to its new location. We're going to have, have need of that as the police department gets into it. We don't need it this May. That rehab will go on through next year. So we have a period of time between the, when they raise the lot and they're supposed to turn it over to us as fairground to get, get the lot established so that we can use it when the, when the police department hopefully takes over next year in March.
But you took on-street parking and gave to the people that parked on that lot, so therefore the people that could park on the street have to park farther away?
Correct. That was part of the decision counsel went through last, last fall.
We should have had the parking spots so that you didn't have to give up on-street parking. You just made it worse. I mean, you've had studies saying that we don't have enough parking down there, but oh yes, we have enough parking, but if it's, I don't see you guys wanting to park down by Tim's shop so that you can walk up to here. You don't want to park right around this building. Same way if I go down, do something down there, I don't want to have to park two blocks away. As you can see, I have my little buddy with me, but.
Your comments are-
We don't have the handicap parking downtown either, by the way.
Those were all comments that were brought up during the, during the discussion when the council did this last fall and it was a concern that they talked about.
Thank you, Marlon. Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Deal?
I will be brief. No long speech, Mr. Mayor. And I accept your apology again. Thank you. Scott Deal, 613 North Garfield. Just a few things, just a few comments. I don't like to rehash things because things have been settled, unfortunately not the way I thought they should have been done, but as recent as yesterday's Hawkeye, we're still talking about the breakdown budget and how you guys just increased our property taxes regardless of considering the elderly and the poorer homeowners in this town by increasing their taxes, which I already said before, but it really hurts because I spoke with a few people over the weekend. Mr. Robert Orton, who's 93 years old, he's a World War II veteran and a war hero with two Purple Hearts and a Bronze Star. He's on a fixed retirement income, of course, at 93, Social Security, and he said this increase is inching him way out of his house. Once again, we're not thinking about the important people. It seems like this town and, and others, not just Burlington, are only concerned about the rich. And then we got war heroes, we got elderly people, we even have former City of Burlington fireman who was on the job here at the City of Burlington Fire Department, Steve Anderson. He spoke with me and he was regretful and upset with your property tax increase. I mean, these are the people I keep encountering and still keep encountering. This is not, this issue is not going to go away. I think you gentlemen and lady really did not thoroughly consider that budget and try to avoid that tax increase. It could have been, and I'll tell you why. One big reason is that also, from the Hawkeye newspaper, I get a lot of my information, but when they advertise new development homes, brand-new homes for $300,000 up to $500,000, you guys are offering them a 10-year tax abatement to the rich who can afford to pay taxes. And those taxes, if you wouldn't give them all these damn abatements, excuse my language, you would have money in your coffers that you would not have had to raise taxes if you would let the rich pay their fair share for once in this country. They're not paying it. This TIF program, ugh, you're talking about Apollo School and the development of Apollo School. I'm all in favor of developing and doing something finally with that ISO in Saunderson Heights. It's a horrible ISO. But if you're going to use TIF money again and give these millionaires, you're spending over $5 million to develop this, and then you're going to give them a tax abatement again, there's less money coming into the city to pay for essential services, our fire department, our police department, our rope, oh my God, our- our road, oh my God, our roads, our neighborhood roads in this town are deplorable. Absolutely deplorable. My parents live in a half a million dollar home, not here in Burlington, but in a suburb of Detroit where I grew up, half a million dollar home. They never received this free welfare to the rich of tax abatements when they purchased their home. No one in that city got a tax abatement for million dollar homes and plus, nobody. And that city's running efficiently. And they have had, and my parents have lived there for over 15 years, and there's never been a tax increase. Because when there's developments and when they build these expensive homes and these rich people move in, they pay their fair share. Why should war heroes and retired firefighters have to pay the brunt and the burden of higher taxes? And then you allow the rich people to walk away skate-free. I mean, to me, that's immoral. Absolutely immoral. And I'm Christian, for whatever that's worth here. I know politics and religion cannot be mixed. But that is a moral issue, and, and, and it saddens me that you allow the rich people to get away with murder here. You would have had the money to get the additional police and fire without raising taxes if you would just stop giving away welfare to the rich. And one other issue, and I, and I wrote a brief letter to the editor, whether you saw it or not, about, I just don't feel you're actually listening to us. I mean, you all sit there nice and smile and whatnot, unless you're arguing with me. But the people in this town, you have a rich resource of people in this town that are talented. They're not brainless and dumb just because they may be poor or because they may be on fixed incomes or because they're 93 years old or like my 90-year-old mother-in-law that was here two weeks ago. They're very highly intelligent people. We need to listen to their ideas. And just, just a thing, and it was in the Hawkeye again, and these are not my words, this is not Scott Deal talking. This is Mr. Mark Ertz. And he just mentioned, you know, some random things. They're just ideas. They're just ideas, you know? I mean, but like, stop the chase of the almighty dollar, you know? Save the future instead of bankrupting the future. Discourage handouts, corporate industrial. Drop the, well, I'm, I'm not going to say that right now, but staff-first response personnel based on our population, based on a historical review. And then the thing that I keep reiterating is stop those tax abatements for the rich. It is corporate welfare. I'm against welfare, and I'm even more against it when it's rich people because they can afford to pay the taxes that we need. We do need to increase our tax revenue. I agree with you on that one. But you need to go after the people that are not paying, paying their fair share.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Questions or concerns?
Leon Sheehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Other than saying amend of what just was said, the only comment I have about all this corporate welfare is the reason you have to do corporate welfare is you're doing corporate welfare. You spend half of your revenues on corporate welfare. Now, take some digging through your budgets and your financial documents, but any of you that want to take the time, sit with me. I'll go through and show you where it's at. You spend half of your property tax revenues on corporate welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan.
Hi, my name is Kathy Little, and I, yeah. I'm here tonight. I think you might recognize that map they just put up. My mother owns the property that's circled by the red. And the city came to them in 2004 when they were going to build the apartments that there, there were three buildings built first, and they said, "We're going to build a road and we need your land to build that road." And they were given three choices. First one, they said, "We'd like for you to donate the land." And then they said, "Or the city can have it appraised and we will pay you," or eminent domain. So they chose the appraisal. They attended many meetings where they were told that since they'd already paid for the road in front of their house, which is West Avenue, that they would not be made to pay for the road to the west. Their attorney assured them it was useless to fight. Fast forward, my father passed away suddenly in November of 2006. Then in 2015, my mother got a letter stating she now owes $49,288.30 in addition to her taxes. The assessor had changed the zoning of the property, taking away an agricultural deferment, which was never mentioned before. This is for a road that we have no access to. It only goes to the apartment complex next door, the one that you just voted to give more money to. I was told by the treasurer's office that my parents should have paid the bill when they got the money for the land, and the property owner next door pulled their checkbook out and paid it. Unfortunately, my parents didn't receive the same incentives they did. The Burlington Land Development Property received $955,675 of incentives when they were going to build the original three buildings. Also, there's other roads in the area. There's Bauer Drive, there's Howard Drive, there's Nelson Drive, and then there's other Mason and some other roads over in the Mason Road area that were paid by TIF or other ways, and none of those were assessed to the adjacent property owners. I'm asking that you take a look at this and consider the facts. My mother's been a property owner and a taxpayer for almost 70 years. She's on a fixed income with only Social Security. And if I don't pay the taxes, March 31st, her property goes up for tax sale. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience with any comments or concerns? Okay. Mr. Tisland?
Just some funny events going on this weekend. I know Sunday is the Magical Afternoon Four. So we've got the Burlington Police Department versus Midwest Magic, and that is at BHS at 4:00 PM. So just see a bunch of people out there. Should be a good time.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott? I just want to say that it's very hard to sit here and not respond to folks that get up to the podium, but we're advised by our attorney that because these items are not on the agenda, that the public has the right to come up. We allow the public the right to come up and speak on anything that they want to speak, speak of. But we should not respond because it's not on the agenda. We subject ourselves to legal action, so let it be known that I sat here quiet because of the advice of the attorney and because of laws that have been created and mostly pushed by, I'll just leave it at that. We can't, we can't respond to.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I appreciate you bringing that up. Let me reiterate, we're not heartless. We're, we're your neighbors, you know, we're people like you, but just to reiterate on Tim, there are times that you want to say something, but it's not, it's not appropriate to do so on things that aren't on the agenda. I do want to say something about the, somebody brought up the roads. I have to say the, the roads have been in pretty bad shape, but they're getting better. If you've, over the last few years, if you've seen, we've really made an effort and look at the budget. But anyways, the roads are getting better, so those of you that have been dealing with some rough roads, we're, we've been working on that process and we're trying to get to where we need to be. I also want to say the, we did the North Gorge Trail Walk. They were working me over. We had to call in the fire department to come drag me out, but it was a, it was a good afternoon. Mr. Tisland was there, but just a fantastic job. And I want to say to everybody that had their, that were involved in that in whatever way, it was phenomenal. It was phenomenal. I'm glad I didn't get, I'm glad I didn't miss that and that I got a charlie horse out of that deal. The, the only other thing is, again, that we, we did have an announcement that Burlington was picked for a site that a show's going to be coming through and doing in Burlington. It's going to be big for Burlington. We'll, we'll really get a chance to showcase all the wonderful people we have in this community and all the wonderful things that we have to offer that so many of us take for granted because we've been here for so long and we just, it's no big deal. But people that do come to Burlington from without, they, they fall in love with a lot of the things that Burlington has to offer. Not saying that our community is perfect because obviously that would be a lie. There isn't one, but it's not the horrible place sometimes that some people seem to, it's almost like, you know, Burlington, everything is bad about Burlington, and I would disagree. I would think there's so many things right about Burlington. There's just always room to improve, and I just think we always need to be mindful of that, so that's all I've got. And Midwest, Midwest Magic game, the police department is going down. Again, the fridge told me to remind you, he said, "Would you see the chief?" He said it like that till he got aggressive. He said, "You guys are going down," so looking forward to that. If you don't have anything going on Sunday afternoon, the Midwest Magic will be taking on the Burlington Police Department. It was a phenomenal event last year. It's going to be even better this year. Come on out and support. It's a great time, so. Mayor Proton?
To follow up with your comments, Mr. Scott, that's something that I never understood. And I went to a session about that at the League of Cities meetings about this open meetings law and commenting. To me, it just does not make any sense, but that's what we're hearing from our attorney. But I do want us, if we could, please, on our either next work session or the first work session in April, have a discussion about our procedures and, and what, if any, changes we might want to make in conjunction with the email that we had gotten from our city manager concerning.
Agree.
That makes sense. So either, either next Monday or the first Monday, the first work session in April, whichever. It's work, Mayor. Okay. Thanks.
I have nothing at this time.
You reserve the right. City manager?
We have a leaf pickup program that begins next Monday. Is that right, Don?
Yep.
Three weeks. So next Monday would be Friday's drought and Tuesday would be Monday's drought, and it'll go right through the system like that for three weeks, and then citywide cleanup follows after that for five weeks?
It'll take six weeks to get through.
Take six weeks, and so that, that goes through and they move through as you can through that process, beginning with Monday drought when you get to that. In regards, I mean, the, the street assessment, that's been something that has come to the council, at least individual council members, as a request over the last year. And going back and looking through the records, whether it was, I don't know how things were explained or, or what was done back in 2004 with that, but the whole process was done the way the process is designed to be done. Whether, again, whether it was ever done to where people understood, I wouldn't be able to express. It's going back a long period of time and records don't tell you that. They can just tell you that everything was filed appropriately with how that assessment was done. We will get that work session on item four probably this next time. I think time allows it. I don't think we have that many items coming up. And I think that was all that I really had. We hit, last week we went up and tried to do a session on with city managers, had Stephanie come up to do a talk on transparency. And one of the things that we're trying to focus on was our use of the open government platform on our website. And, you know, you try to sit in front of a room full of city administrators and go over the benefits of a tool, and the, the internet isn't available to go and look at a website.
You're kidding.
Doesn't make it very, doesn't make it very easy to do that, so.
How sad.
We at least had a few communities that were there that were, were using the site and using other tools for trying to communicate. And, you know, I think the big takeaway that, that I got from going through that session is we talked about our three communities and some of the questions that came up. Getting information out isn't easy. Getting it out in a way that people can understand isn't easy. We try. We don't do as well as what some would like to see us do when it comes to different pieces of information. But, you know, as things have come up, there's some of the, like, the, where our rental units are in town was something that I brought up. Where some of our nuisances complaints have been, trying to get those out on the GIS system. We try to get information out where we can. We don't have the staff to do it as well as what we'd like to or what, what people, or what people really would like to see us be able to do, but we do try. That front page of the newspaper from this weekend, Stephanie was mentioning it to me, just talking about how that was attributed to what she put together. That front graphic was done by Tabitha, and that was something that Tabitha, in order to try, Gardner from downstairs wanted, Miller wanted, Gardner, Gardner, wanted to do, was to get a better understanding herself of how the budget worked and where property tax dollars went. And she put it on herself just to figure it out and try to put information out. What, as she just figured it out, got a better understanding of it, trying to look at what some other communities have done and try to push out information the same way. We don't have time to do that with everything, but we do try to get at least some of that kind of information out. So I, that's something that I do like, that our staff does, where they do have the time.
No doubt.
They do try to, to make things as clear as, as we can. Now, I know we're never going to not have criticism for that, I mean, and rightly so, we should. We don't make it as clear as, as what it would be nice to be able to have, but we do try. And so I'd like to commend my staff for where they do put the time and effort into trying to get that done.
Amen.
Amen.
That's all I had, so.
I just, that's funny because that was the one thing that I did forget. I wanted to say that when I, when I first got on this council, so many changes have taken place from the, from the, was it five years ago or whatever, up until now. And it's all been an efforts to make government more transparent. And again, nobody's going to be satisfied with where they're, where we're at. Obviously, you can't satisfy everybody, but I think it's, I definitely think it's good steps, and I always try to think of, is this going to be a good decision? Am I satisfied with this decision now? And am I going to be satisfied with the decision when I'm not sitting behind this desk and I'm sitting out there with you guys? And, because that's going to be a reality. And, and I, I have to say that I'm very satisfied and very thankful that. We have been moving in that direction to, to reveal more information and to be as transparent as possible. Thanks again to all the staff, everybody that, everybody that called in. I think Steph was calling on radio shows this year. I mean, nobody can say that we didn't go out of our way. They might not agree with what we did, but to make sure that everybody knew and saw what we were doing. So again, just wanted to give a big thank you to everybody. That's, that's all I've got, so.
Can I move that we adjourn at this time?
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson? Aye. Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
This means adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Jim.